Let's call the meeting to order of the September 25 briefing session. Ms. Sisk, could you call roll, please?
Council President Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Orick.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect Councilmember Bingle is absent, but it will be joining us shortly.
Yeah, he's here. He's just not here.
He's coming.
Okay. Okay, and we're going to start with the September 25 agenda. We have a few things to substitute, add, subtract, multiply, and the first one is the, under emergency ordinances, I'd like to request a motion to suspend council rules and add ordinance C-36445.
So moved.
Second.
And any-
I have a question. I just saw that we got an email from Scott Simmons at the county about that. Does that have any impact on our timing?
And I was going to let Mr. Jones talk about that, but let's first do that, then if we want to defer, we can after we, after he speaks to us, if that makes sense. So, any more commentary? And for Councilmember Bingle, we're requesting to suspend the rules to add the animal control regulations. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? Okay. And now we're going to need a motion to add the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Now, Mr. Jones, you want to tell us about your communication?
Yeah, I was able to have a conversation with the CEO, Scott Simmons, just briefly. And he did just send an email to the council too regarding meeting. As you can see, if this does move into a dispute resolution, he would be the main contact for that. So he's asking that he would be the contact to come down and meet with the council. He is suggesting if one of the Thursday study sessions would work for that presentation. We did have a good conversation as far as being able to share the facts, what their staff is going through with their credentials and their veterinarian on staff as well, and then also moving forward of what type of either code change or ordinance change, working with the county commissioners as well around capacity as well would be an option moving forward. But he, you know, he did ask, you know, a little bit more time to be able to have that conversation and then how we move forward between the two agencies.
So, given that information, is anybody inclined to?
Go ahead. Well, I guess the request was that they would put a pause on unnecessary euthanasia. And was that a commitment made in that phone call?
We discussed it. That commitment was not made. The commitment was really around the capacity piece of it. And, you know, he didn't want the ability to be able to share some of that information around the non-medical and medical portion of it, of where they were a couple of years ago and where there are now with their credentials and the behavioral assessments that they do on all of their animals. And then also, you know, as mentioned, you know, about 7,000 animals come through scraps on an annual basis, and they do have about a 93% success rate on either rehoming or adoptions as well. But I did mention the pause on, on non-medical. At this point, they said between the public safety concerns with some of the caretakers, staff, and then also the animals themselves. That would not be a commitment to make at this, at that time, but would be looking at as far as the capacity piece of it and working together.
Well, I guess without that commitment, I would just continue with this on our agenda for tonight.
I would agree. And I would also say that I think it's a, this is offering an opportunity for all the people that have contacted us in the last several weeks to come down and to at least testify and be part of the discussion that we're going to have. I know that there's a lot of frustration in that. Right now, I have a letter here from July 6, 2023, where we sent to the county commissioners kind of an overview of what we were trying to do and had the professional courtesy of letting them know and that we'd like to meet with them and talk about this. So this has been going on for literally months that we haven't received any feedback. And I just think that it's, if we've got people coming down tonight to talk about it, that what they want to say and what we need to hear is important. And so I would leave this on the agenda for tonight.
And if there's a change, obviously, between now and our legislative session, we can revisit that tonight during the meeting.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just wondering what, like, the implications of triggering a dispute resolution and what that means. That's what Scott Simmons mentioned.
Chris, can you?
Sure. The agreement between the county and the city.
Microphone.
Oh, sorry. The agreement between the city and scraps has a termination section and it has a dispute resolution arbitration section. And I think, I haven't seen Mr. Scott's email, but, so I'm not sure exactly how he phrased it, but I think he's implicating the arbitration section. We're not exactly sure how those two interact with each other, but that's, there's a dispute, and if there's a dispute, it's subject to some kind of discussion.
I guess my question is, does this get us into trouble violating the contract, potentially?
I don't think so.
I'm looking at Lyndon.
Good afternoon, Council. No, I don't, it doesn't get us into any trouble, Zach. What it does is it starts the process. It's basically, this is how we would, this is how we would resolve any disputes. First of all, it starts between Mr. Simmons and Garrett. They would have a sit-down and see if they can come to some sort of agreement. I think our position is very well put. They, the county knows what our position is. So that would be the first conversation. If they just can't get to there, then we go to either arbitration or mediation. I can't remember what, I think it's an arbitration. And basically, we're bound by that. So then that would be a third party, usually a lawyer or an ex-judge, and they would then tell both of us what's going to happen. So, no, it doesn't get us into trouble, not, doesn't get us into litigation. We won't have to have a big bill or anything like that. It's just, first of all, it's conversations that hopefully we can get to the bottom of something or get something that is, is worked out between the parties. And then if not, then we go to somebody outside of the system and ask what, what they think we should do.
Any other questions? Well, Mr. Smithens, go ahead.
Just one more question for you. So if you do have to involve a third party, then there would be an additional expense?
There would. It's nominal in the grand scheme of things, thousands of dollars, not hundreds of thousands, so.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, so what I'm hearing is we want to leave this on the agenda for tonight unless some miracle happens and somebody decides to do something special. Right, okay. Then, under resolutions and final reading ordinances, resolution 0081, I think there was a substitution.
Did we add it or did we suspend the rules?
Oh, sorry, we have to suspend the rules again for this, too.
I think we suspended the rules, but we didn't add it to the agenda.
No, we didn't.
I think you did have a vote to add it already, didn't you? Are you talking the animal?
We did.
The scraps one? Oh, yeah, we did. Oh, yeah.
No. That, we did that.
Oh, yeah, we did.
Okay. So we need, the rules are still suspended. So we do need to add updated version of 0081 if you so choose.
Actually, just point of order. I believe the rules were suspended specifically for C-36445.
They were.
Not to be technical, but I think we have to-
But go ahead, be technical, that's fine. So let's go ahead and have a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Discussion?
For this, for this resolution?
This particular resolution.
Just for the substitution?
Yes.
Okay.
Is the substitution the one that I circulated?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
All right. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right. Now, do we have a motion for the substitution?
I move to substitute the version circulated earlier with one slight change. It was missing one word. It was missing the word actions and the be, therefore be it resolved. So it's a Mayor Woodward's actions that affiliated the city. It's currently just missing that word. So the motion is to include it with the addition of the word actions.
So moved.
Wait a minute.
Or is it a second?
Second.
Am I seconding?
Yes, and then we have a discussion. Are you seconding?
Sure.
Okay. Any discussion about this? Remember, we're going to have robust discussion during live session, so is there discussion now?
Yeah, I'll support the, the substitution so that we can get the, the final version on there. And then later, obviously, we'll have separate discussions.
Yes, we will. Yes, indeed. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right. I think that's all we have for tonight.
Council President, before you leave that, I'll circulate a revised version of the resolution before 6 o'clock tonight.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was that?
He's going to circulate a clean copy before tonight.
With just that one word added and this section substituted?
Yes.
Okay.
I think you can, because we have a question on it.
Okay.
Can we do that as soon as possible, as soon as possible?
Let's go on to October 2nd. Turn it over to Mr. Jones.
Oh, we have one more, I think. We have a question. Go ahead.
We'd like to pull number three to be briefed on today's agenda.
I'm sorry, which one?
Number three on the consent agenda, number three, the five-year contract with waste connections.
Okay. We're pulling that?
We're pulling that, and Chris is actually here to speak.
Okay.
He's coming down right now.
Now he's speaking to Jacoby. Oh, the other Chris, all right.
Just for clarification, pulling to vote separately, just so I can-
Yes, pulling to vote separately, but to have it-
But we're not going to vote on this until tonight.
Okay.
But do you want to brief now?
Can we brief it now?
Do you want me to brief it?
Get our questions answered?
Okay, okay.
Sure. This was previously briefed last week. This is a five-year contract for the disposal of ash generated at the waste energy facility with waste connections and expected annual cost for this contract, four and a half million with the future price increases determined by CPI formula.
So I-
Go ahead.
So I was just asking, which I put in my email, really what was the decision of trucking it or doing it by rail, and how does that fall into our sustainability action plan?
Sure. So the, the RFP went out and it was evaluated by six different criteria. Sustainability was one of them. That included measures planned or in place to reduce environmental impacts of the transportation and disposal of waste. Both respondents scored very highly in sustainability. They have different approaches to that. The one provided trucking, just because they determined that when you include the emission factors from transportation to and from the rail hub and to and from the rail spur to landfill, that it was comparable. You also get more weight per load in a truck versus the rail car. So in their determination, they thought that was an appropriate response in terms of sustainability, and they felt that it offered more operational flexibility and service versus rail.
So just on sustainability, so?
They, they both scored very highly and comparatively. Each evaluation committee member scored these independently, and once the, you know, they were unanimous in their determination that the waste connections was the preferred option for the city.
And there were three, were there three?
There were two responses to the-
Two responses, okay.
And one, one of them was the one we're currently have a contract with now that expires.
That's correct.
That was not, okay. So a comment was, this will eliminate union jobs and take them out of state to a non-union facility. What is, while endorsing a proposal that evades Washington state regulations will provide a cost reduction, it also means that the city's current partner will be forced to cut 10% of the workforce, and this will eliminate union jobs. Tell me how that, and thank you.
I can't speak to that.
Okay, you can't speak to that, okay?
I, I can't speak to the cost perspective, that this contract will save the city $844,000 a year for our, compared to our current pricing, and is over a million-dollar reduction compared to the, the response provided for next year. So there's a significant cost savings for the city.
And the ash goes where?
It currently goes to a landfill in Clickatack County. The waste connections would be disposing of it in a landfill in Boardman, Oregon.
In Oregon?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if the current provider were here explaining why this, this would be the wrong move, I guess from their perspective, did they have any sort of a legitimate argument? Or does, did everything kind of go through the proper channels and, and we've gotten, everything's buttoned up?
Yeah, I mean, we put it out for RFP. They responded to it. And like I said, the, the scoring and the criteria is consistent with other solid waste RFPs that have been, you know, sent out within the state of Washington. And so it's just, yeah. And there, there were other factors, too, that, you know, for, that were, you know, obviously determining as part of this, but that's, you know, the cost was definitely a consideration.
Councilmember Strat.
So just one other concern that was brought to my attention. So what I understood was that there were the two applicants?
Yes.
And that one was contacted and had discussions with the folks in charge of the RFP and the other one did not?
No, that's incorrect.
So were there discussions at all with either group?
They were, they were both, the RFPs were sent out. There was no contact with any of the respondents. And then until the evaluation committee had a preferred selection, and then at that point, as per the RFP, we entered into negotiations and with the selected respondent, and then notified the other that, you know, we had pursued that option, so.
And then this was, the RFP was sent out in February, right?
January.
January.
Yeah, it closed on March 20th.
Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, just, yeah, last question. Regarding the jobs, does this result in any way in a change in job status for existing city employees?
No, it does not.
Okay.
Okay. Any other?
Well, I just wanted to say, I just thought we needed more discussion around a $4.5 million contract. That was, he briefed it, but it was kind of glossed over a little bit and didn't get into as much detail of some of the nuances of why this particular provider.
Yeah, and I will apologize. I think some of this got lost in, you know, the transition that Council President Beggs had been briefed on this previously back in August, and so.
Last August 2022.
I was going to say, Marlene stood up, but she sat back down. So I don't know what that means.
We've probably exhausted this topic, but.
Yeah, she's down.
No, I was just going to, that was, what I was going to add was that Council President was working closely with Chris, and Chris Wright served on the committee as a representative of the city council. So, so we did get that connection because we asked Chris, because Kelly wasn't in that role yet. Otherwise, she would have been a logical choice for that, for that selection committee, but, so.
Okay. We good? Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
We missed one thing, and that is a-
Defer.
-deferral for 0080.
Yeah, I move to defer resolution to 023, 0080, claim for independent investigation.
Second.
For, for how long?
Oh, indefinitely.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll just speak to that. We had a meeting this morning with Mr. Jones, the mayor, legal and HR, and it was a really productive conversation. And the administration committed to coming next week to public safety. And I believe Councilmember Cathcart already confirmed their attendance on the public safety agenda to talk more about the lessons learned from the incident with Johnny Perkins and what they're trying to do to implement it and bring that forward for the public to know. So I thought it was a productive conversation and agreed to, that I would support a deferral.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Terry, did you get that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. Moving on now, Mr. Jones. On October 2nd, do you want to start us off?
All right. Starting with the consent agenda, number one is a preapproval for fleet services, and this will be briefed by Rick Giddings.
Good afternoon, Council. This is a preapproval for three Ford F-250 service trucks for the Water Department. Excuse me. These will most likely be purchased using a DES or Sourcewell contract, unless we miss the order window, in which case we'll go out to a competitive bid process. These will be $95,000 apiece, including sales tax and upfitting the service body on them. Yes?
Are these replacing existing or adding to?
They're replacing existing trucks. So the trucks they're replacing have, are at the end of their life. They're gasoline-powered. These will be fueled by renewable diesel, so they meet the, the criteria for the clean fuel.
And do we have any expectation of a resale value of the existing that we're getting rid of?
Vague, yeah. I, you know, the, the costs or the used values have gone down a fair amount. And so, you know, we're, we're looking at in the $10,000 range probably.
Anybody else?
No, I was just going to say, make sure we speak into our microphone so people can hear us, because you're eight feet away. Thank you.
Don't talk over us. And I, did I hear you right, $90,000?
$95,000.
$95,000, yeah, that's, that's not to exceed, including tax. The trucks are, are a little more than half that. The service bodies are, you know, new service bodies are probably around $40,000 installed.
Okay, so it's not, it's not the trucks, it's all the other stuff?
It's the, it's the stuff that makes the truck useful.
Yeah, got it. Okay. All right. Sorry, go ahead.
No, thank you, Rick.
Thanks.
Number two, amendment number one for the Interlocal Cooperation Act agreement with Spokane County, and this will be briefed by Mike Piccolo.
Good afternoon. This is the amendment to the interlocal agreement with the tourism promotion area. That was briefed to the Finance Committee a few weeks ago. It makes two main changes. One is a request from the TPA Committee to increase the voting membership from three to five. So it'll be one additional voting member for the county, one to the city. So the city would have three and the county would have two. Then the second request is, it was a submission of a petition by the businesses that are paying the assessment fee to increase the additional assessment by $1. Right now, there's a $2 base fee plus a $2 additional fee. That can go up to $3 total under state law. So the request from this petition, which the county has to process, is to go up to that $3 amount. The state law does provide that. The additional $3 charge would go away in 2027. So the county is going through the process of noticing that required public hearing, and they will process that in the next week. So they're hoping to have the city council approve the interlocal agreement changes, so they can get those documents to the Department of Revenue by the middle of October to meet the deadlines, to have all this in place, and collecting the assessments January 1st of 2024.
Questions? Go ahead.
Mike, I'm trying to remember. We just increased that rate three years ago. It was a dollar. It went to $2, and now it's going to $3.
That sounds about right, probably about three years ago.
Okay.
And three is the maximum.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Number three and four, both MOUs between, the number three is the MOU between the City of Spokane, Spokane County, and the City of Spokane Valley, and this will be briefed by Eric Olson.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council President, Council members. I am here to ask for your approval of the MOU with the county for the JAG grant. The total amount is $214,815. The city's portion would be $118,148. There's actually two pieces to this. One is for the actual MOU for the grant. The other is to recognize the city of the valley as a separate recipient, but theirs comes out of the county's piece, so it doesn't impact what the city would ordinarily get. Basically, the county is taking theirs and splitting it right down the middle for the city of the valley and with the county. Questions?
Questions.
Perfect. You want to hit number, number four?
That's both.
Oh, that's both. Wow, you're efficient. Perfect.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Number five is a little bit of Shamrock, for Shamrock paving for the Maple Ash Chip Seal, and this will be briefed by Jonathan Adams.
Good afternoon, Council. This is a proposed little bit contract for Shamrock paving, Maple Ash Chip Seal project from Northwest Boulevard to Rowanout. The little bid was- The low bid was $1,765,000. We also proposed to add a 10% administrative reserve. There was one bid received, which was Shamrock, as I mentioned, $1,765,000, which was about $447,000, $447,000 above engineers' estimate, or about 34%. This is for crack ceiling, or the crack ceiling work is expected to start later this fall. Actual chip ceiling will be next summer. So, any questions?
Great, thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Number six is an Interlocal Agreement between the City of Spokane and the Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission, and this will be briefed by Jackie McCall.
Good afternoon, counsel. This is just an ILA. The academy has some vehicles assigned to it for use for basic law enforcement academy, for Balia, so the vehicles actually belong to CJTC for use by students in Balia. This would allow for those vehicles to be able to be serviced by our fleet department with CJTC reimbursing essentially the city. They would be paying for the services done. And this would not be used all the time, they've actually utilized some, I think, some private vendors in the meantime, until this can get put into place, so there's both options available.
Questions?
All right, thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Now, moving into the special budget ordinances, the first one is Ordinance C36446 with the General Fund, and this will be briefed by Sarah Thompson.
Maybe, maybe. Oh, there she is.
Oh, there she is.
I'm sorry, I thought I was here for CBS funds. Did I hear it incorrectly?
We have the, so the, add two classified community justice specialist positions to support the grant.
And that is, my apologies, I thought that was coming up next week. So I am backwards. So yes, so we have the Administrative Office of the Courts who provided us funding to support our community courts, and we have two positions that are attached to that. The SBO is here today just to increase the FTEs, and everything else is previously voted on. That's all I have, I don't know. I'm sorry, I'm a week off.
And this just increases existing capacity, essentially? Not new functions or different functions?
Brand-new functions, actually. So Community Court is rolling out a new case management plan, which will allow us to assist those participants coming before us, connect them with services, schedule their appointments, make sure we have all that follow-up, so we're offering case management versus just a, hey, we'll see you in a week, we're just trying to give that extra hand-holding.
Okay, so essentially case managers?
It is essentially case managers, the, the overall title is still following Community Justice Specialists. We're starting with two, and they're funded by the AOC, so there's no funding coming out of the General Fund at all, and it's ongoing funding, which is great.
Along those lines, is there a, is there an end to the ongoing funding, or is this?
No, so the legislature approved about $9.6 million across the state for courts of limited jurisdiction to support their therapeutic courts, and it's just anticipated to be ongoing. Right now, the funds are pretty static for two years, it's a biennial budget. Hopefully, it's the same amount every year, or more.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
The next ordinance is Ordinance C36447. I do not see Sarah Nuss here, but this is an SBO that was provided, briefed on before as an EPA subaward to grant for HVAC upgrades at Northeast Community Centers, so this now gives us the authority to spin.
It has been a year of HVACs.
Lot of, roofs and HVACs.
Roofs and HVACs.
That's what we work on.
Yeah.
All right, now moving into resolutions and final reading ordinances, the first one is Resolution 2023-0084, and this will be briefed by Chris Wright.
Busy writing our amendment. Which one are we on?
Lincoln Heights.
Lincoln Heights, pedestrian street.
Yeah, this was briefed to committee earlier, this is adding to the planning commission work plan to study whether or not 29th Avenue ought to be designated as a pedestrian street.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just, I just want to clarify, I had a constituent reach out and was concerned that the South Hill was getting an extra walking path, and, and I think there was just some confusion around what this means, and so this is really just a planning tool, it doesn't actually create new infrastructure, and, and that we're just analyzing it.
No, I think it just controls future development and encouraging pedestrian-friendly development.
I would add, it does not reduce lanes, it does not add bike lanes, but it is designed to make sure that pedestrians are safe, so whether that means maybe lowering the speed limit to where it was before at 20 miles an hour, or adding a hock light or whatever, but it's a planning, and certainly restricting driveways that can go out onto 29th as well.
Counsel President, I have to just follow up with that. That's, Lincoln Heights neighborhood has been advocating this for a long time, so this is not something new, it's been in their neighborhood plan, but in order to really get it before council and to have the planning commission put up, they did do a resolution, which was voted by their neighborhood council, and was sent to us requesting this assistance.
All right, perfect, thank you, Chris. Next resolution is the 2023-0085 regarding the temporary wastewater bypass that was previously briefed at committee, so I don't know if there's any additional questions for Marlene?
No.
We're good?
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Wright, you're, you're back on for Ordinance C36444.
Okay. Yeah, this was briefed to committee as well. This has been a joint project initiated by Council President Kinnear and Officer Tim Schwering, I'm not, I don't remember his rank, I'm sorry.
Detective.
Detective, thank you. But involved legal staff, prosecutor staff, Detective Schwering, and our office in drafting this, and basically regulates massage and reflexology businesses under our licensing power, and gives police and prosecutors the tools to prosecute those unlicensed businesses, unlicensed massage therapists and reflexology people, and perhaps aid in the overall enforcement against human trafficking, sex trafficking.
And add that this is prompted by requests from police to actually put this in place. City of the Valley has a similar one, we got our information mostly from the city of Kent, right?
Correct.
And as you all know, human trafficking also coincides with guns and drugs, so it's the perfect trifecta that we're trying to control, trifecta, yes, and get rid of, and it isn't, it doesn't originate here, it originates in Seattle and then on to China where the women are being brought over. So fingers crossed we can pass this, the SPD can enforce it, and we can get a handle on this.
So with that, there's no first reading ordinances, and that concludes the advanced council agenda for October 2nd.
Okay. Does counsel, excuse me, does counsel have anything to add? Otherwise, we'll meet again at 6 o'clock.
I was just wondering, when are the hearings for the budget going to start, the week after that?
October 6?
So we have our, our joint full council budget meetings, October 6 and the 13th, and I cannot remember the resolution when we started the budget hearings.
All right, but that's in the previous resolution.
Yeah.
That was like the hearings for council meetings, not, not our joint meeting.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? All right.